Good evening. Welcome to the October 21st, 21st, let me get that right. 2021 meeting of the Mount Juliet Municipal Regional Planning Commission meeting. Always wonderful to see a full house again. We were talking about that here. Things have changed and gone and ebbed and flowed, and so happy to see everybody here. And there'll be opportunities for everyone to share your thoughts, opinions, and we can do so respectfully as well. The, we do have a couple of officers here as well, and one of the things that we are charged, or they're charged kind of to help us to enforce is we've got to stay within the limits for the room for, per the Fire Marshal Code, so I think a full house, full chairs get us there. But if anybody happens to wind up missing a chair, winds up in the hall, and the opportunity to speak arises and would you would like to come forward and talk a little bit to us, we welcome that whether or not you end up in the hallway, which I think they can probably hear us or hear within the room. So we're grateful for you guys being there. As we begin tonight, had a special request from Commissioner Christensen, so I'm going to turn it over to her here real quick.
Good evening. Everyone is probably aware that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This is something that's near and dear to my heart because six years ago, I started my battle with cancer and I'm five years cancer-free. I'm just wanting to tell you guys that in the last year and a half, we've kind of been overwhelmed with a pandemic and people have let some other health issues kind of drop to the side and not had appointments and such. And as I've seen headlines, that it seems that the number of breast cancer cases are on the rise when actually it's just that people have not been and done their regular screening. So all of you ladies, I encourage you to make sure if you are at risk or of the right age, to make sure you keep your mammograms up. Gentlemen, the special ladies in your life, just remember that because it is a fight for the whole family and just early detection is key. And I'm just thankful that I am five years cancer-free. So, thank you.
Thank you. I feel like that was a wonderful thing to share, and we're certainly thankful for you. With that being said, I want to read this tonight because we do have a member absent. It's in regards to our quorum for the planning commission is the presence of five members of the commission should constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. The chairperson made his or her discretion wait up to 30 minutes after the scheduled meeting time for a quorum to be present. In the event that a member is required to leave a meeting prior to adjournment and departure causes a loss of such quorum, no further official action may be taken until a quorum is restored other than an adjournment. A majority of those commissioners present and in no case less than four affirmative votes should be required to decide any item of business requiring action by the commission. So just wanted to announce that for anybody new here this evening as well. Our first item up will be to set our agenda tonight. I have a couple of quick adjustments and a couple of requests. One is an additional agenda item. It would be known as item 3.2 on our agenda per request of our city manager, Mr. Kenny Martin, and that is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners to approve the purchase of 65 East Hill Street from West Wilson Utility District in the amount of $400,000. That may move to item 3.21, which would fall underneath our consent agenda and be the final item on the consent agenda. Other than that, in lieu of time and to try to move some short things to the front and get them out of the way, I'd like to request to remove item 9.1, which is also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, review the zoning ordinance amendment to 8-207.3, minimum lot size, to the front of the agenda. That'd be immediately following the consent agenda and prior to the reading of item 4.1. And also move one of small discussion item. It is a non-voting item, but simply a discussion item and announcement that'll get out there to be an item in which we'd vote on at our next meeting, and that's item 10.1, and that'd be the land use plan amendment to remove RS-15 zoning classification from medium density residential and reclassify to high-density residential. Any objection to moving those to the front? That being said, we will set the agenda as stated. Next item up on our agenda will be our staff reports and Ms. Hamler.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to our continuing education seminar that we had, and I hope that everybody got their certificates. For those that had other plans that night and didn't show up, I'll make sure to find the most boring book that I can for you guys to read. But that's the end of my report. Thank y'all.
Yes, thank you. And you didn't even make mention, real quick, Ms. Hamler, as Mr. Barlow comes to the microphone, to all of other planning commission, as I say this, I am at fault because mine is blank up here, but our planning and zoning survey and just some feedback for staff as far as what we are doing good, what we can do better, any room for improvement suggestions or thoughts, and we can work to get that. Maybe you have nothing. If you have nothing, then leave it there. If you have something, make sure we get that back to staff as well. So, and thank you guys for that training session. I certainly enjoyed it myself and part of our requirements. So been to many of them and well done. We appreciate it. Very grateful. And thank you to Jill for putting together and staff for the food as well. So with that, Mr. Barlow.
Certainly. Thank you very much. I do also want to echo Commissioner Christensen's awareness for breast cancer. My mother is a survivor of that as well. Went through it first time when I was in college and actually had a little bit, found a spot earlier this year. Had that removed and Lord willing, everything's clear moving forward. So very near and dear to my heart. That's why I'm wearing pink as well. But as far as for the staff updates, I did want to give some pretty cool stuff, the update on the bridge widening over Interstate 40. Be looking for the bridge rail to be formed up and forward here in the next few weeks. So that's going to be a nice neat touch for us. One of the elements for that that we were tasked with the staff is to really make that a gateway feature project for us. It's not just capacity. That's the purpose of it, but we also had some other objectives of trying to meet to create a little bit more of a gateway feature coming into the city. You'll see on the bridge rail be pretty cool. I don't know if you've seen the TriStar logos that's embossed into the concrete. We're doing that. We're also going to, we did our own Mount Juliet touch with it. We're going to do a little MJ logo in there as well, just an M and a J. Nothing special, but just something to kind of give us a little identification for us and put our, literally put our stamp on it. So that's exciting. Exciting to see that. I know the form work is going up right now. Cedar Creek Greenway, I may have mentioned this last time, but we're actually under contract with a contractor and pre-construction meeting next week. So we'll be looking at to start in November. It's going to connect from Charlie Daniels Park over Cedar Creek and then go all the way down to basically where the soccer fields that we have there, we have the little trailhead down there. That's, that's going to be the ending point right there. So very excited about that project going. I know that's one that when I first got here seven years ago, that was identified as a high priority project for us to be pursuing, and here we are. And also wanted to give mention myself and my staff, we met with our consultant team for the Stormwater Utility, and so that's a big step moving forward for us. We've got that kicked off, and that's going to be a long process. There's a lot of data involved with it and how that's going to look, but I'm very excited about that for the city. I feel like, I made the statement today, I feel like we're growing up. Having our own stormwater utility and being able to actually have a funding source to do the things that when we get calls, we feel helpless about because we don't have the facilities, we don't have the means, we don't have the money to do a lot of the stuff with stormwater, especially on personal property, that then try to mitigate some things. And so this is a method for us and gives us some mechanism to do that. And so very excited about that and the projects that are going to come from that. But that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Next item up on our agenda will be our citizen comments. This time we will take citizen comments. Public is welcome and encouraged to make public comment about any item on our agenda. There'll be two opportunities for you to make comments. You may speak now or you may speak when the item is presented to the planning commission. So it's an either or. If you've got something on the agenda that you're passionate about and you want to share with us, you can speak about it now or when we're hearing the individual item. And the only other thing is that we do ask you to limit your comments to three minutes or less. I know we've got a lot of people here. We're going to try to process you through. So I don't try to be rude on that. I'll kind of keep a three-minute timer up here, and if you're looking at me, I'm going to raise my hand. I'm not asking a question. I'm just kind of waving my hand to say you've got about a minute left. So come to your closing comments at that point right there. We want to be fair and equal to everybody that would like to speak tonight. So with that being said, anyone that wishes to speak, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Turner, 1212 Mountain Burn Lane. I'm here to represent number eight. I live in the subdivision, Mount Vernon Wood, which is directly across the street from the proposed subdivision. I have no problem with the subdivision as it is with 18 homes. I just ask that you do not increase that number of homes because I believe that if we increase number of homes for that subdivision, it wouldn't be contiguous with the other subdivisions there in the neighborhoods such as Willby Station, Mount Vernon Estate, Mount Vernon Wood, which have larger homes and larger lots. Secondly, if you do approve this, I would ask that you approve this being contingent upon doing something to South Green Hill Road. As you know, this is an important road. There's probably only three north-south corridors north of the interstate. There is South Green Hill Road, there's North Mount Juliet Road, and then there's Golden Bear. Also, the city really puts a lot of emphasis upon this road. I believe there's going to be a red light there at South Green Hill Road and Lebanon Road, proposed. There's also proposed, I understand, a cul-de-sac or roundabout at Willby Station. So the importance of this road is going to be crucial not only to our current situation with the new high school there, but also the future growth of the subdivision into the city. So therefore, I would ask if you do approve this, that it be contingent upon, one, either lowering the hill, it's a blind hill if you know, or two, adding a turn lane, north and south turn lane there at South Green Hill Road and Mountain Burn Hill. And if you do add that middle turn lane, I would ask that you would straighten out that curve, and therefore you have to take some property away from the proposed subdivision to straighten out that curve and add the proposed turn lane. So I thank you and ask if you do approve this, that it be contingent upon some major improvement to South Green Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments at this time? Seeing no additional citizen comments, we will move forward with our next item on the agenda. Next item on their agenda will be item 2.1 underneath the minutes approval, the planning commission regular meeting minutes from September 16th, 2021. Make one or a couple of them right there that staff has brought up to me, falls underneath item two. Says Chairman Winchester, review the changes. That would be impossible because I was not here. As well as I think 2.1 is where it picks up. It had me as voting yes for the regular meeting minutes and impossible because I was not here. So correction and move me to absent as far as those go. And that is my only adjustment or amendment. Any other changes, adjustments, typos? Got a motion? And second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions? So approved. Right. Catch my breath for this one. This will be a long one. Number three falls underneath our consent agenda. We'll begin with item 3.1, which was reviewed the 2022 Planning Commission Calendar. Item 3.2, Jackson Hills, Phase 3, Section 3A Development Letter of Credit number 694-088-56-731 in the amount of $155,599.46 can be released. Item 3.3, Jackson Hills, Phase 3, Section 3B Development Letter of Credit number 694-088-56-730 in the amount of $84,289.30 can be released. Item 3.4, Park Glen, Phase 6A Development Letter of Credit number 711-0689-B in the amount of $158,801.46 can be released. Item 3.5, Silver Springs, Phase 3 and 4 Development Letter of Credit number 1103 in the amount of $81,919.67 can be released. Item 3.6, Stone Hollow, Phase 4, Section 1 Development Letter of Credit number 90007800 in the amount of $163,841.3 can be released. Item 3.7, Stone Hollow, Phase 4, Section 3 Development Letter of Credit number 90009985 in the amount of $49,323.67 can be released. Item 3.8, Tuscan Gardens, Phase 10 Development Letter of Credit number 954-255-3054-90016 in the amount of $98,316.14 can be released. Item 3.9, Tuscan Gardens, Phase 14 Development Letter of Credit number 954-255-3054-90087 in the amount of $336,745.96 can be released. Item 3.10, Tuscan Gardens, Phase 15 Sewer Letter of Credit number 954-255-3054-90083 in the amount of $39,157.50 can be released. Item 3.11, Tuscan Gardens, Phase 16 Development Letter of Credit number 954-255-3054-00003 in the amount of $104,018.85 can be released. Item 3.12, Tuscan Gardens, Phase 18 Sewer Letter of Credit number 954-255-3054-90084 in the amount of $43,494.14 can be released. Item 3.13, review the final plat for the Adams Lane Right-Away Abandonment and Dedication. Item 3.14, review the final plat for the Edens Grove subdivision located at Nonable Road. Item 3.15, review the site plan for Monday Memorial Park Pickleball Courts located at 300 Monday Memorial Drive. Item 3.16, review the site plan for Two Rivers Ford Building Edition located at 76 Belinda Parkway. Item 3.17, review the site plan for Volunteer Bank located at the corner of North Mount Juliet Road and Clearview Drive. Item 3.18, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, is review the public taking or purchasing of property for sewer EQ Basin. Item 3.19, review the appraisal and the sale of the former City of Mount Juliet Finance Building located at 2365 North Mount Juliet Road. That's also a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. Item 3.20, an ordinance to rezone to single-family residential RS-15 PUD planned unit development and adopt the preliminary master development plan for Curd Road subdivision being located at 2844 Curd Road MAP 054, parcels 073.00, 081.00, and 082.02 in the city of Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee. Item 3.21, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners, it is to approve the purchase of 65 East Hill Street property from West Wilson Utility District in the amount of $400,000. That's a lot.
That was a lot.
Ms. Hamler.
Thank you. Some pretty exciting opportunities for the city on this consent agenda. So thank you for your consideration on those. I just have a couple of changes. One on the calendar that you have submitted. We're going to add a statement stating that we will no longer accept deferrals after 4 o'clock on Friday that packets go out. I personally like to pride myself on our department being transparent, and if our agenda continuously changes and uploads, it just doesn't give that appearance. And it's, it's also not fair for my staff to have to redo those agendas over and over and over. So we will no longer accept deferrals after packets go out. They will have to come to you guys and ask for that. I probably think that you guys are confused as to why I put a preliminary master development plan on the consent agenda, but it's because you guys have already seen that once and it was referred back to you from the BOC. And the reason for that is because when it was presented to you, it was, it had shown villas and those have been replaced with single-family homes. So they just wanted to get you guys' opinion on that change, and it will go back to the BOC on Monday night for final reading. Other than that, staff recommends approval with any conditions listed. Thank you.
Mr. Barlow.
Okay. I just did want to add some comments, some conditions for the Adams Lane final plat. That includes the abandonment, which I believe Mr. Marquetti will give a little bit more information on that as well. Did have some conditions. I think timing is probably most important with that. Obviously, this is part of Providence Central, it's part of the PUD. This area, this right-of-way, this roadway is to be realigned to go to Providence Parkway. Providence Parkway extends from Burger Republic and it goes on out to Central Pike. That's under construction right now. And so we're okay with the abandonment. It's an old road. I think it's better served to be used. Obviously, the development is doing all the infrastructure for us, so abandonment of that is no problem, but we just want to make sure it happens at the right time. And so I did want to add the following conditions, and Jill, I can send these to you. I've got them all typed out. We have condition number one, obviously, remains. Condition number two, the right-of-way shall remain in place until a grading permit is issued for the property utilizing the existing Adams Lane right-of-way. A temporary, number three, a temporary cul-de-sac shall be constructed at the time that the roadway is closed. That is if it does not, is not extended down to Providence Parkway. Number four, barricade Adams Lane at Central Pike. And number five, remove notes number eight and nine on the final plat itself in the notes section. Other than that, no other changes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? I want to make one comment real quick. That's on item 3.1, or excuse me, 3.18, the purchasing property for the sewer EQ Basin. I guess my nickel on that is I hope that BOC and goes towards option one. After reviewing what you're doing there and the necessity for it, and looking at that location and looking at the optional location, I hope that they were in order of your opinion as well, because certainly that option one looks like a good place for that. Yes. So that's kind of my chiming in the nickels worth. So with that, we will ask for citizen comments in regards to any item on the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to make comments, welcome and encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. See no citizen comments this time. We need to close our planning commission meeting in order to open a public hearing. Public hearing is in regards to item 3.13, which is review the final plat for the Adams Lane Right-Away Abandonment and Dedication. And item 3.14, which is review the final plat for the Edens Grove subdivision located at Nonable Road. Anyone wishing to make comment about either of those items during the public hearing is welcome and encouraged to do so, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no citizen comments this time, we'll close our public hearing, reopen our planning commission meeting, at which time I am looking for a motion in regards to the items on our consent agenda. It's motion, second by Commissioner Circe. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions? So approved. Next item up on our agenda will be item 9.1, which is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It is review the zoning ordinance amendment to 8-207.3, minimum lot size. Ms. Hamler.
Thank you. This was brought to us by Vice Mayor Justice in an attempt to capture larger lots in our, the proposed developments throughout the city. Many times you'll often see 5,500, 6,500, 7,500 square foot lots, and that's just not acceptable. And so this is requiring a 10,000 square foot minimum for those lot and encouraging a 15,000 square foot average for those, a minimum for those residential PUDs.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? See no questions or comments from the commission? Like to ask for citizen comments regards this item on the agenda. Anyone wishing to make comments, welcome and encouraged to do so. Seeing no citizen comments at this time, like to ask for a motion regards this item on the agenda. Got to be quiet. Motion for a positive recommendation. I will second that. Some motion for a positive recommendation with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions? It's a positive recommendation. Next item on the agenda was simply a discussion item. This is a non-voting item. However, we will allow citizen comments on this, should there be any. It's item 10.1. It's a land use plan amendment to remove RS-15 zoning classification from medium-density residential and reclassify to high-density residential.
Thank you. This also is brought to you by Vice Mayor Justice in an attempt to encourage larger lot sizes throughout the community. This, like you said, is not a voting item. I'm simply just doing my due diligence in the public hearing portion. We'll vote on this next month, but I wanted to get your input on your thoughts of that. It's, it's not necessarily a map amendment. It's an amendment to the text of the land use plan regulations, and it's the chart that we go by that designates what zoning classification goes into each land use designation. So it would be simply moving RS-15 from medium-density over to high-density, which typically is 2.2 acres or 2.2 units per acre.
Any questions, comments from the commission?
Are there any other? Are there any other ramifications from moving that to high-density other than lot size?
I don't think so. I think it'll promote larger lot sizes because you guys are probably not going to approve a bunch of high-density land use amendments. So I think that's the reasoning behind this.
Spoke to staff a little bit about that, and they actually see like 4,800 square foot requests for lot sizes, so.
We do. You guys have no idea what we see on the front.
Pretty interesting. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Chris, you're coming in.
Sure. It's single-family residential, minimum lot size, 15,000 square feet.
Okay. And so we're taking, the discussion here is to take, remove RS-15 zoning from medium-density and considering that high-density.
Correct.
High-density is currently what square footage per lot size?
Currently, it's RS-10 and R-10.
Okay. And what typically goes on the high-density? That's going to be townhomes and apartments?
Well, actually, townhomes are designated as multifamily on our land use plan.
Okay.
So RM8 and RM16 are in multifamily. Currently, high-density is RS-10 and R-10. So R-10 would allow duplex or villas, and RS-10 is the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. But in a PUD, those lot sizes can be a lot smaller due to the open space provided by the developer.
Good.
It would also, I'd like to add, it would not affect anything that we currently have on our agenda that's been submitted. It'll be moving forward after approval.
Great. We'll see that and we'll get an opportunity to read it and discuss it and vote on it the next commission meeting.
Correct.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
This time we'll call for citizen comments. Anyone wishing to make comments, welcome and encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. See no citizen comments this time. We will move forward with our next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda falls underneath item 4.1, which is Residential Design Guidelines Waiver. It is review the Residential Design Guideline waiver request for canvas at Mount Juliet located at Golden Bear Gateway.
Hello, hello. This ought to be a little familiar to you. This is, this came before everybody here at last month, and there was some confusion as to what the applicant was requesting. And in the meantime, we have kind of nailed down some, some of the items that they're asking with more clarity. Again, just to refresh everybody, this is a part of Park Glen that is now going to be known as the Canvas at Mount Juliet. This is 87 single-family lots for rental homes, development, the rest of that subdivision. And the gist of this request is they want to see what the planning commission's response to these waiver requests is before they go ahead and complete a final plat. So as it stands now, there's five requests. I'll go through them right here. I'll go through them right here real quick. Number one, secondary materials on the front facade of the homes. They have agreed to no more than 21% on the front facade only. So that means that the other sides of the house will be 100% brick. It is just the front up to 21% secondary, non-brick or stone. Number two, garage and driveways to access arterial and collector streets in lieu of alley side streets or combined drives required by code. Today, actually, the, they met with Public Works and Shane showed me the, some of the outcome of that. Matt had went through and measured the lots and found that a number of them can be widened to accommodate the side garage. Not all of them, but a number of them. I don't know what their response is to that because that just occurred today, but we will see. They are here, I believe, so they can fill you in on that. Number three, garage doors separated by a two-foot wide brick or stone column facing the street. This is a requirement in the code for these types of houses. They do not have that, they just have one door. It will not have the stone column. Now, that's for the two-car garage. If it is a three-car garage, there will be a column in between the two-car section and then the third portion. All right, number four, minimum interior garage width of 20 feet and 440 free and clear space. Two-car garages do not meet these requirements. Okay, but the, that's only 40, or there's 87 total lots. 41 of those lots will be three-car garages, and in that case, it will meet that requirement. So you're, the waiver is for, you know, not all of the lots, just the, you know, the remainder of the 87 that are, you know, our, our three-car garage. And number five is the 10-foot garage setback. This one's easy. No garage setback on any of the houses. That's what they're requesting. So those are the five requests distilled down as far as we can get them. And, you know, we are not specifying one way or the other, but if you guys decide to approve this, we have the conditions of approval listed in there. They're just basically, if you don't grant the waiver, the houses have to comply with the code. And that would be all. Thank you.
Guess I'll follow up a little bit from what John said on our meeting today with the developers representatives. So I think what's important to look at is variance or waiver request number two. That is for the driveways being basically front, front-facing. That only applies to Parkland Drive. The other streets we would deem as alleys, which would allow the front-facing. So that's something important to keep in mind as, as to what that applies to. One of the things that we tried to look at, and Matt White, my office, he's, he's gone in and tried to analyze some of the, the widths and what might, what we might be looking at here. Ultimately, I think what you'd be looking at is the, the lots on the southwest, east, west, southwest side of Parkland Drive. The ones backing up basically to the floodplain. Those are the ones that probably have the greatest number of driveways that might be fronting the road. A lot of the others, they're going to be coming off the side streets. My lot 705 said 710 on down the line. Those driveways will all be coming off the side street, so those garages thus will be doing the same. So the idea then is that really we're just looking at a handful there that would be on the east, northeast side of Parkland Drive. And so our, our focus as well, you've got the sidewalk as well on, on the south side, southwest side of Parkland Drive. So those are the ones we feel are probably the more critical. And our place comes into it from the standpoint of the safety of the roadway, people backing out into the roadway. I know from meeting with the developers on this one, they've proposed some traffic calming. So I think that could be a big positive. This is going to be a cut through. I know Commissioner Justice is here, he could definitely speak to this being a cut through. I know he's dealt a lot with speedy concerns and cut through conditions in Parkland, as well as Tuscan Gardens. And so, but some things to consider on that is the, where those are located, how it's at. If you did grant that, then I would ask, one, I would state that we would still work with the developers to try to meet as many of those side entries as we can. I think it's possible on several of them, based on the width, based on the driveway width. The homes themselves, they're going to know which homes they're putting on which lot and will be able to determine before final plat which ones would be able to have a side entry garage and which ones would not. And so if you did grant that, obviously with any conditions you might deem necessary, but the one thing I would state would be that we could firmly identify which lots would be side entry and which would be front entry by the time we get to final plat. And so you could have the opportunity to grant that sort of in a condition of, you will have another look at this at the final plat level as far as what goes where and have some say so there. Obviously, the lots are already approved via preliminary plat. Already have that vesting in there. And so we're, this is, obviously, this is a weird development. It's one that was approved in the county and now here we are dealing with it in the city. And so there are some constraints we have to keep in consideration there. But anyway, that would be our take on it, is that there's an opportunity, we believe, to try to settle out some more by the time we get to the final plat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to clarify real quick. We are really voting, this was last month we heard this, and then we're really only clarifying or voting on these five variances. Very well. So me not being here and without having to pull out my minutes, did we vote to grant these last month or did we? Just so I know a little bit of where we are.
It was deferred at the last meeting.
It was deferred at the last meeting.
There was no vote taken.
Okay, so we haven't, so if we, we're looking at the entire project, but these are specifically the variances that lie within the project to highlight them. And then the rest of staff comments are submitted to.
We asked them to bring it back more specifically what they were asking for, so it wouldn't be carte blanche.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Questions, comments from the commission? Let's go ahead and call for representation of this project. Do we have representation here for this project? Name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Just zoom out, Air Tyson, Watermark Properties, 206 North Main Street. Thank you. The overall purpose, just wanted to highlight that this, this is an interesting item. Primary purpose of this is to provide transparency and clarity into what we're building or proposing to build. This is the last phase of the Parkland master plan, which has been clarified, initiated at the county level, annexed into the city. And with that, provides some gray area to applicability of current architectural guidelines, building of structures within there. Originally, Centex Homes started the initial phase of construction and we're the last phase to go under development. Prior to this, Tuscan Gardens was the most recent with homes finishing within the last year. Those under that, that HOA, which did not have the architectural guidelines or the current architectural guidelines within the HOA or the, the Parkland master plan. And so we are providing our proposed architecture as kind of open transparency and clarification for this is what we're planning and gain buy-in of commission. Just want to note that within that county-approved master plan, the architectural requirements of current Mount Juliet standards are not met by any of the currently constructed homes. And so what we are proposing is consistent with what is currently built and has been most recently built within the last year, just to the east of us. So wanting to present this item to provide clarity and buy-in to really our proposed architecture conflicts with current guidelines for those five items. So wanted to present, present that and gain buy-in, additional staff items that, that we've incorporated through this process, such as full brick cladding, which is not consistent through the Parkland, but we are providing driveway, street access, additional items that we have been able to incorporate through this process. So wanted to kind of run, run this through and kind of fall in on those last five items, which conflict with current architectural guidelines, though is consistent with what was built and approved within the Parkland master plan. And with that, I'll stand for any additional questions.
I got a couple real quick.
Yes, sir.
They fall swear items two, four, and five to me kind of conflict and where I'm struggling with it a little bit. And so request number four is minimum material garage width of 20 feet and 440 free and clear spaces is what our ordinance reads. And the request is two two-car garage house plans of 15-foot wide garage door. While the others have 16, minimum width, clear space and two-car garage models is 18 feet, four inches. Apple has submitted a plan showing the lots that have a proposed garage square footage, no less than 300 square, 370 square feet. For over 41 lots will have a three-car garage exceeding the 440 requirement. So to me, and, and the background of that, and I was a big champion of getting actually that ordinance within here because I always challenged, challenged the builder one day, I was like, let me bring my truck over. And my truck doesn't work because what do we got in our garage? We got a hot water heater, we got ballards, we got steps. And basically it made a garage, a storage unit, which is what my garage is personally at home anyway. But when you're, when we don't have an effect, the 10-foot garage setback, we've got a variance to the front, then we got a garage that's only feasible if we're in the Prius model or something down like that. We've got the potential, then we got the sidewalks right there, then we got cars parked in sidewalks. So then we got cars parked on a arterial road out there. And so each one of them is conflicting against each other on that to create what would potentially be a backing out issue, which Mr. Barlow addressed, a parking on the street, which our ordinance says that you can't do overnight. And you got parking in the yard, then you got a HOA that's angry. We got a whole nother can of worms that begins to open up with that. And the intent of getting that was so that somebody that drives an average Honda Accord or, or Taurus, if they even make Tauruses anymore, I don't even know. But, but you can't get a mid-sized car or two mid-sized cars in the garage. And then if you got an eight, 18-foot, you got a 16-foot garage door on that, basically gives you one foot to get out of your car for your door to swing open. And if you got block on the inside, that measurement of 18.7 or 18.4 that you're requesting is probably a stud to stud or a drywall to drywall and not a block to block, which means that it's probably narrower than 18.4 if I'm a betting man. We got a problem right there with that. So my nickel worth on that is I really, you know, jump on the CAG guy, get him to redraw the plan a little bit and get that garage where it's functional, because you're probably going to stick your water heater in there. Probably going to have steps on some of these, especially if you got topo and you back up to the, to the water back there on the back that you got to address right there. And at least make the garages functional right there, you know, because we can't really grant you the 10. So if you got your average three, three-bedroom house, you got to anticipate at least two to three cars on there. Driveway is probably not going to have the queuing or the ability to hold three cars. And then if you get a driveway that's not, or garage is not functional on that, we immediately got a problem that goes along with it, and that's what we don't want to create. And hence the purpose behind the ordinance and having it in there. So that's where I would struggle to say you're kind of asking a little bit much of something that everything conflicts, conflicts with each other in order to create a long-term problem for us out there. Or a long-term problem for the citizens, or in your case, a long-term problem for your rentals that would be out there. Because I know you guys would control the HOA in that case right there. So it's kind of yeah, one of those that I, I personally struggle with on that, when it's just, I would figure that you can meet with your setbacks on this and increase your garage size to be able to accommodate that. Willing to, because it is what you've seen in Parkland, or I believe it's what you've seen in Parkland on the no 10-foot garage setback. But we need to make that, if we're going to grant that, it's kind of, we got to make sure that the garage is functional and be able to queue two cars in there and be able to get them in and out.
Great comment. And, and I resonate with that too, being a truck driver and drive 2,500 and I measured it after last meeting and it's 19 foot six, right?
Yeah.
And so how do I park a 19-foot six vehicle in an 18-foot garage? It doesn't happen. And I, I think that's one of the great things that we were able to do from the last meeting, deferral, is to look at those plans and provide those three-car garage options with deeper garages. So we have ability for that, that, that consumer who's drives a truck. And I realize that between me and my wife and the kids, one, one of the stalls is filled with bikes, right? And so there isn't two cars that are fitting in our garage at home because we had, you know, kid stuff that's filling it. And so I think that's one of the benefits that we've been able to add since presenting this the last month, month's meeting is that three-car garage option for that person who doesn't drive a Prius or a Civic, to be able to have options for them with, within the community.
But see, to me, that's not really solving the problem because it's still, granted you added an additional garage on there, but if I was a betting man, I'd still bet that your 19-foot six-inch truck still can't fit in that single-car garage. And so it's kind of, once again, I'm back to that.
Sure.
We all need to jump in a Prius in order to make the house and the garages work.
No, that's great too. And to clarify there, that, that's a minimum from our smallest model. And, and we are proposing a plan lineup that is kind of baked from a, a large national builder that, hey, here's great benefits and efficiencies and what you're able to build in this, but this is, you know, the, all the renditions and this is what it looks like, right? And so there, that's a minimum, though that's just on one model. The remaining models do have that additional depth.
Understood. Further questions, comments? Very well. Let's thank you. This time we'll call for citizen comments regards this item on the agenda. Any citizens wishing to make comment are welcome and encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Commissioner District 1 Ray Justice, 251 Spring Hill Road, Mount Juliet, Tennessee. I'm going to ask that you give these people no waivers whatsoever. They came into our city, come under the cover of dark, bought property that they knew was already zoned after they'd been told that we did not want a development of their kind in our city. And they thumbed their nose at us and came in anyway. If they want changes made to what we have already put in as ordinances, they should have figured out what they could and couldn't do before they bought the property. So if they, I mean, they, they've blown up enough dynamite over there to do a civil war reenactment. I've gotten hundreds of phone calls in regard to that. And when they were called about it, they basically just kind of thumbed their nose again. That's the kind of neighbors that they've been so far. I don't see that getting any better. I very clearly will be speaking for the Parkland people over there that they're not happy about this subdivision or this particular development coming in. I'm not happy about it, not how they, not how they came in. And so as far as waivers go, you know, our, our ordinances are our ordinances. That's very, very simple. You know, they could have brought this in as planned unit development and there could have been some conversation to where we could have made this a little less painful, but they chose to go a different route. And so with our ordinances being the ordinances that we passed, they, they need to be able to come in and, and adhere to, to our laws. This is our city, not theirs.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this time? Seeing no additional citizen comments this time, I'd like to ask for a motion in regards to this item on the agenda. He made, uh, we got a motion in a second of, uh, to deny the waiver request two through five.
Sorry.
It's motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against extensions? Is it denied? Next item on our agenda falls underneath preliminary platens, item 5.1, which is to review the preliminary platent for the Wells Farm subdivision located on Bender's Ferry Road. Ms. Marshall?
Sure that by denying two, three and five, we approved one and four waivers.
Is it, it was denying two through five?
Two, three and five were denied, but.
Two, two, three, four.
Two, two through five, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Get that here and aid battery. I'm on it. So one was approved.
One was approved.
But I think.
Ms. Hammer?
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
This, like you stated, what is a preliminary plat for Wells Farm subdivision, a single family subdivision containing 223 lots on 280 acres along Bender's Ferry with frontage also on Gilly Road. The property is owned R1 and A1 in the county. And the smallest A1 zoned lot in this development is 23,231 square feet. Uh, much like subdivisions in the county, this will not be served by public sewer, rather a step system managed by a Dinas. Primary access will be from Bender's Ferry, as I stated, another access shown on the cul-de-sac of Gilly Road. Five foot sidewalks are provided on one side of the internal streets, but have not been proposed for the Bender's Ferry frontage. And the applicant has asked for a waiver to our subdivision regulation of sidewalks on both sides of the road and again on Bender's Ferry. They have also asked for a variance to slopes, to disturb slopes greater than 20% in order to provide homes with basements. As far as elevations are concerned, we have not seen those, but the developer has committed to four sides bricks. Should you approve this subdivision? We have conditions listed for approval and I ask that you incorporate those in any motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to expound some on the variance for disturbance to slopes greater than 20%. Again, those are for natural slopes. That's the way our code is written. And I guess to identify that a little bit better, our code is written for hillside. You know, we sometimes see steep, steep slopes, but elsewhere in our code, it's identified as hillside development standards. It groups that in with a lot of things like buffers and such. Having said that, um, from talking with the developer, uh, this engineer did a really good job of analyzing what the slopes look like on this site. There are some areas, I'd call them maybe ribbons of slope that exceeds the 18 or 20%, mostly 20%. And those really affect, we've identified those, the way we like to look at it is if it affects the majority of where the home is going to sit. If that, if it's not that it, there's maybe a small area that might touch or be within the lot, um, it's, uh, it's going to be the situation where my, the home might be sitting within a large area that is a steep slope. Uh, and so speaking with the developer on that, working with their engineer on this, they have a really good plan showing that it's in your, it's in your packet. Let me get to the page toward, toward the last page. You can see it, it's color coded. Uh, it's PP 1.16. Uh, you can see it, it doesn't really show the red that much, but there's really not a lot of areas of 18% to 20%. It kind of goes from less than 15 to over 20, kind of quick. And so you can kind of see the ribbons I'm talking about of areas. We've identified roughly about 25 to 27 lots that really we believe are in this area. And so from talking with the developer, obviously there's some other things that, you know, there is a, a need for basement lots in the, in our community. I think that's pretty apparent. Wish I would have had one in the tornado. And so identifying those, obviously understanding that those lots are good to be utilized for basement lots. Elsewhere in our code, it's not in our sub regs, but going to the zoning regs that don't apply here, but it can give us a good guide. The zoning regs do identify, uh, that basically if you were to have any steep slope area, engineer letter for those lots, uh, that we could look at something of identifying all those lots and we could work with them on identifying those in the final plat as critical lots. And basically with the critical lots, um, coming up with engineered letter for each lot, uh, with, with the slope, uh, certifying the slopes are stable, materials stable. Additionally, if there was any, uh, utilizing the basement walls, uh, for any structural elements, you could have that included in the, in the structure, engineer analysis on that as well. So that would give the home buyers the protection of knowing that the engineer has looked at each individual lot, has looked at the stability of the slopes on the lot and has, uh, with the basements and with the way these homes are constructed, that they'd be constructed in such a way, uh, that it would prevent any failure, uh, or slippage. I know good, well, not good, but bad example of slip, uh, slope failures Hickory Hills. But again, you're talking about an area there where the slope was failing on behind the homes is probably 50, 7500 feet in up difference in elevation, uh, in that, in that area. These are not that extreme in, in overall height. We've just got, like you say, some, some, I call it ribbons of, of area with the steeper slopes. So that's kind of our idea of it, um, trying to identify a path forward for those lots. But something that could, uh, might could be revised potentially, um, you know, and obviously market could change over time. I know Mr. Earhart has, uh, has, has a long vision for this and what it would be for how he'd be working through this. So, you know, some of these lot lines could be shifted. We also recommend maybe shifting some setback lines on some of these to try to avoid them where possible. So along with that, I think there's some ways to try to work those in, uh, but still trying to identify this. I think one thing for this commission to realize and to think about, don't just think about this, this, think about other lots that we see. Think about the conditions here and if we were to ever grant this on others, how they may be granted, uh, and, and how it might, you might end up with a situation where, um, maybe, maybe facilitating the basement loss is a good path forward, but I'll leave that up to y'all to, uh, decide. That's our thoughts on it from talking with staff internally. I know we've, we've analyzed it a lot and talked with the builder as well on this. Thank you.
Questions, comments for the commission? Let's go ahead and ask for representation in this project. Come to the microphone, name and address for the record.
Will Hager, List Design, 2804 Pauls Street Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, representing Universal Builders. As Andy and Jennifer outlined, um, we're willing to, to commit to those lot specific letters and investigations for those critical lights that are further identified on the final plats. Um, and we're also, uh, happy to discuss the requested variance for the sidewalks. Uh, this is one of those areas where we're trying to meet city subdivision requirements, but also dealing with county road commission and their, their criteria as well. So if you have any questions along those lines, I'm happy to answer those.
Tell me about your amenities.
I believe we have a dog park, uh, hiking trail and a playground also.
Going through any kind of a clubhouse or pool?
So, uh, don't believe we have a clubhouse planned for the, for the neighborhood.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This time we'll open up to citizen comments. Any citizens wish to make comment are welcome and encouraged to do so. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Travis Belcher. Uh, I live at 400 Gilly Road where the, uh, one of the proposed entrances is supposed to be. And it's greatly going to affect my property. So when they had the, the land surveyed, uh, the property lines were not the ones that were observed the last 23 years. When they had it surveyed, the property line kind of changed. So in the, in the, uh, the plat, I guess, or the subdivision design, you'll see my barn or my building right there on the edge. So last meeting at the county, I went up, you know, hadn't heard from anybody, uh, and said, you know, we got all kinds of issues on this property line. Like I said, my property is probably close to a mile that it joins his property line right there. And, uh, anyway, so they, they deferred it at the county and, uh, Tom White, the attorney and, uh, who else? The guy, Mike Rios, I guess, who drew the subdivision, they met with me at the property. So we talked about where they had the, the access road to the subdivision. It was actually what I felt like was on my property. So they actually put two revisions, but what we had, what we had requested wasn't access to the subdivision. You know, because it's, it's going to just kill the front entrance to my driveway. You can see on there, I'm the immediately to the left, uh, on Gilly Road. And where that road's going to be, my driveway just comes down at a crazy angle, the whole nine yards. The other problem, uh, my driveway also where they're going to come in and clear all of that, I have the low spot and all the water, I mean, the stormwater is going to wash my driveway for the next 10 years. So what we asked was just an access, just a driveway off of the subdivision to my property. Evidently that was denied. You know, they didn't want to do that. They did move the, the road over a little bit off my property line. But it still doesn't solve all the issues. But right before I got to this meeting tonight, we get an email, uh, me and my brother, and I'd like to read it to you. Cause we proposed a land swap where my building is, point two of an acre, that we were going to swap somewhere in the property. You know, uh, which was, I thought was a good idea, but I still would like to have access to that subdivision if they're going to destroy my front where I come in and out of Gilly Road. But, uh, the email says, Yancy, I want to be very clear on a proposed property swap and not filing the lawsuit by my client, uh, and not filing the lawsuit by my client for trespass is clearly conditional upon no further attempts by you and your brother to challenge the well sketch and subdivision plats at, at Mount Juliet and the county. We have been informed by both city and county, our proposal meets their requirements. I think it's clear your brother's pole barn is significantly over the property line. We are willing not to file suit to move the same, to move the same. This is a total accommodation to your brother significantly in the part due to our relationship. If there is any further objection by your brother to our proposal, we will file the lawsuit. I am out of town and will not return to my office until Monday, but wanted to be very clear about our proposal, which is just a bully move. I mean, to me, I mean, he doesn't want me to say my concerns over the whole thing. I have concerns about Gillette, you know, 229 home subdivision going on a dead end road anyway. When I bought that property, I'd never dreamed that would happen. They're actually going to tear down probably a six, $700,000 house to make this road right next to me, which I never dreamed they would do that. And it's, they've got a 60 by 100 barn, they're going to put a road right through. And the, the actual road frontage on Gilly is not that great. I mean, I think it says 104 feet, but it's really about 85 feet is what he has. There's just going to be after, you know, since I'm here, obviously sharing my concerns, there's obviously going to be lawsuits on my whole side, uh, according to them. So I'm requesting that you don't approve this, uh, at all. I mean, the load of the traffic on Gilly Road, I mean, it's a 19 home dead end road, Gilly Road. It was never designed to access a 229 home subdivision. And the other part about the elevations that he was just talking about, I'm sure that's going to affect my property. I'm not sure I understand any of that. I would like to, I would like to have time to understand that and all, uh, how it's going to affect me. I mean, basement homes and all that. I mean, like I said, I share the biggest property line with this property. You know, the stormwater, the, uh, the step system, all that, I think, you know, and maybe it's, they've done their due diligence. But I have several concerns and my driveway and my access to Gilly Road is my main concern that they're not willing to work with me on at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Damewood, addresses 361 Gilly Road. My concern, uh, other than what, what Mr. Belcher's pointed out, again, it's a 19 homes on this road. All of us have five to 20 acres. This road at the end of it is a stop sign in both directions is a blind spot. The 20 of us that live out there are very used to that, but on any given weekday with 200 homes dumping potentially onto that road, it's going to be a nightmare. There's no place for a stoplight. There's no place at all. We're in the country out there. Not to mention that at the end of Bender's Ferry, we're already backed up past the church just from the other subdivisions that's been approved out there. Adding another 200 plus, plus there's another subdivision up the road, there's, there's, Bender's Ferry is not, not a high traffic road. We're already going to have problems at the end of that road with, with the subdivisions that have been approved. We're just adding to that. And this, this subdivision is going to dump onto the cul-de-sac, not into the road. It's not going to be a, a intersection. This is going to be a traffic problem because people are going to barrel out of there onto onto a cul-de-sac that, that already has kids and animals and, um, a bunch of people out there that have been there minimum, I think 20 years is our, we've all been there at least 20 years. It's going to ruin that area. I'm all for progress and everybody says they're for progress until, until it's in their backyard. If nothing else, um, don't destroy Gilly Road on the account of these other 200 homes. The access on Bender's Ferry is going to be bad enough, but bringing it through a really quiet subdivision or quiet road is not the answer.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lori Ramon, 315 Gilly Road. I live right next door to Jason Damewood. I echo everything that Travis Belcher and Jason have discussed. Again, traffic, environmental issues, there's a lot of creeks on that property that dump right into the lake. I think we talked about that in the Wilson County meeting, uh, quite a bit. We didn't even know this was coming up tonight. So we're, we're struggling to find the agendas and where this is coming up at as well. Can't pull it off your website. My husband actually had to call and that's what we validated that it was coming up today. So it's kind of odd that, and I don't think we've actually seen the plans. We've seen pictures, but not actually the plans. So being a resident on the street next to a subdivision with 200 and some houses, you know, we would like to see that, see a little closer and be able to find other concerns we may have. So it's the traffic, environmental, and something we were thinking about the other day. Because the Moss property down Bender's Ferry is also up for some kind of rezoning. And, and we're going to add 220 more homes, plus that, plus there's some Amaze Chapel, I believe. What fire stations are going to support all these new, all these new developments? What fire stations are going to support all these new, all these new developments? So I have a concern because the traffic's already bad enough. So how are the fire trucks going to get in to help us if there is a fire? So please consider that when you're making your decisions, along with the traffic, the roads, the schools, the infrastructure. It's got to be in place before you bring all the people. We know it's going to happen. We know, we know it eventually will come, but we need to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this time? Let me ask staff real quick to help clarify. Where is this on the Wilson County planning, planning agenda?
They're right, tomorrow morning. That's why your first condition states subject to sketch plat approval by Wilson County. They had it scheduled for last month and it was deferred as Mr. Belcher stated.
It was deferred from Wilson County?
The last meeting. So their meeting just happens to fall the day after our meeting. So I spoke with Mr. Marchetti about how that would affect the approval tonight, and he stated to add that condition, number one, that I have shown, subject to sketch plat approval by Wilson County.
So, and just for familiarity too, if we, if we were to disapprove, county can still approve.
Correct.
Correct. And then it falls underneath developing. If we disapprove, basically it just means that they don't follow our guidelines.
Correct.
Don't have to follow our guidelines. If we approve, it makes it fall more uniformly with the city of Mount Juliet's guidelines than the Wilson County guidelines.
We'll all let Gino take over here, but I, I think as long as they meet our code, we have to approve it.
Yes. Marchetti?
And you're right. If you don't approve this, then they're free to do whatever the county requires, which are less stringent than what we require on our subdivision regs. And they've met all our regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Please.
Just like to get your thoughts on that entrance into the cul-de-sac. It's kind of for a subdivision of this size to enter on the side of a cul-de-sac seems a little odd. Yeah, it's it's a little unusual. I would say probably just take the, you know, take the road and reroute it. Make Gilly Road be the through road into the subdivision would be typical. The downside of that, you're going to have to leave that radius. Looking at that, there's a lot of driveways on that cul-de-sac. There's really no way to get rid of the cul-de-sac.
Right.
And so I don't know that they have property to realign the roadway to make it a through road into their subdivision. I don't know that that radius would meet any kind of design speed that would be appropriate. That's why we've kind of left it as is. You're right, though, it is not the best in the world. I guess the good thing that I see out of this as far as overall traffic flow, I do believe most everybody's going to be heading straight out to Bender's Ferry and not taking Gilly. I think the homes there on the north side, I think will. I think you've got a collection there that will. Probably the northernmost, maybe 15 to 25 homes are probably going to take it on a regular basis. But the more director out is to head to the main road in the subdivision and head straight out to Bender's Ferry. So that's the other side of it. I feel like it would be less traffic heading out that way. More of a spur road, I guess.
Are there any improvements that we're holding as a condition to Gilly Road?
No. With this being in the county on county roads, we, we really just defer to the county on those for their improvements. That's where this being in the county, county on county, it makes it really difficult for us.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? Please.
Just to clarify here, this, so this being in the county, if we are, have a positive recommendation for this here, it doesn't necessarily mean we support this. It means what we're trying to do, they could potentially come and do something not as good as this, basically, for lack of a better term. Is what, is what we're getting at. I, I echo the, the thoughts, the, the concerns of Gilly Road with that potential traffic flow coming through there with being a cul-de-sac road. It is a very odd shape there. So I know this has been up before. Is this an ingress egress point where it could potentially just be for emergency vehicles only, where that gate would open up with the emergency sirens to make it to where the traffic does not go on to Gilly Road and it forces everybody out to the main road? Is that a possibility? We could do that to protect the residents over there in the traffic path that would be coming through there?
Let's ask Ms. Hamlin or Mr. Barlow, Commissioner Cunningham's asking about something like a bump gate?
It, it's possible, kind of like a Knox, Knox box kind of thing or something like that. I'm assuming the county, county, well, this meets our subdivision regulations for needing to, so. Which I think meets up with the county. I mean, that's definitely a possibility. Let's say if it was.
Does that create a waiver or variance?
I don't think so, as long as it's a platted public way.
We do, we give it essentially a single entrance, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm. For general purposes. Thing I'll say about having multiple access points, we really experienced that heavily, not just in the tornado, but in the May storm last year as well. You can also have that situation in ice, ice and snow, depending on what your slopes are. You know, there's some times where you can get in and out of one subdivision one way, but you can't get in and out the other way. So any of those kind of atypical situations, but they happen. Those are the ones that we always like to keep in consideration. Generally speaking, I'm not necessarily a fan of gating those unless I feel like, I know we talked about it with the, with the other one, the Moss property before, they backed up to York Road and we wanted to see something there. We had concerns about York Road. But they had multiple access points, had two access points on Bender's Ferry. Of course, that plan is in limbo or out right now. So that's not happening, but that's kind of a recent example of something that we've looked at. This is a little different in that you just have the two access points. That one, we had three. I didn't want to pour traffic on New York Road, but until maybe York Road could be improved. I think the improvement, you know, you talk about it, roadways, as long as they're improved, you can handle it. You know, a few traffic, a few additional vehicles is okay, but you just don't want a heavy burden on it day in, day out. Again, I, I would say probably you're just talking about the northern tier properties there that are going to be using Gilly.
Like a note to, I spoke to Mr. Marchetti before our meeting. We could request improvements to roads at this body. One of the issues that we have is the enforcement of our, our ability to enforce road improvements on a road that we don't own. So i.e. if we made, if I said, hey, let's do a roundabout right here in front of, of this development on it for the purpose of putting it there, they can go forward and the county can go back to us and say, well, glad y'all did that, but you're not doing it. And so whether it's county or state. So our ability to control improvements within roads lies within the development or i.e. the property being proposed in front of us and any off-site improvements, whereas we can make them as conditions. It also has to be an agreed upon item that would even be allowed, whether that's a state or county roadway out there as well. So one of my biggest concerns is roadways, accessibilities and whatnot on this. And so that's kind of how I came to the understanding of where our abilities are and where they, where they lie. And so just want to make sure, and I think Commissioner Cunningham spoke very well a moment ago saying it's not necessarily, whereas might not necessarily support, but what to do? Did I?
You did. My point in saying that was, it doesn't necessarily mean we support it, but we're preventing something worse from happening by, if, if this gets approved, because we don't have the control. They can, they're compliant with all regulations, all codes.
Commissioner Resch?
Your, your scenario of the roundabout that you mentioned, would a bump gate fall under that same type of scenario where it would be our recommendation to the counties and say, yeah, good idea, but no? Okay. And do our subdivision regulations require two entrances?
I don't think so.
They do require? Okay.
Oh, no more than that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions, comments to the commission? This is a voting item, not a recommendation item, if I am correct, and believe I am. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion regards this item on our agenda. No vote, no motion does constitute an approval. Doesn't apply. With that, I'll make a motion for approval subject to staff comments. It's a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Aye. Against, abstentions, so approve. Next item on our agenda falls underneath the land use plan amendment. It's item 6.1, which is review the land use plan amendment for the Providence Commons Townhomes located at South Mount Juliet Road.
Hi, that, that item has been deferred by the applicant. The next item too. Providence Commons Townhomes have deferred.
Gotcha, sorry. Item 6.1, review the land use plan amendment for the Providence Commons Townhomes located at South Mount Juliet Road has been deferred per request of the applicant. Item 7.1, which will be our next item on the agenda, which would be a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It's to review the rezon request for the Providence Commons Townhomes located at South Mount Juliet Road has been deferred per request of the applicant.
Yes.
Very well. And we are hearing item 7.2, right?
Yeah, is that the, is that, I don't have that agenda, or the, yeah, the Pleasant Grove, yeah.
Perfect. Next item on our agenda is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. It is to review the preliminary master development plan for the village at Pleasant Grove located 555 Pleasant Grove Road.
Alrighty, something a little bit different here. We don't see every day a mixed use development. And it is currently zoned for mixed use. This is the preliminary master development plan portion here, so it's the very beginning of the process. Like I said, it's already zoned that way, but since it contains multifamily, it will have to be with a pod overlay, and that is what you see before here. So I'll go through some of the high points here. This is going to be 275 apartments included in three buildings, and then there's four buildings of commercial, varying sizes. So that's a total of, you know, I think the biggest commercial building is 45,000 square feet. And then they have a small pop-up retail that they propose that's around 2,000 square feet. And like I said, 275 apartments over two other buildings. They meet the 20 acre requirement that we have recently imposed on multifamily. They're at 21 acres. In a, in a CMU district, you're allowed up to 16 units an acre. They will have approximately 13. So it's below the maximum there. I, I do want to add, one of the residential buildings may include a commercial component. Maybe the applicant can expound on that a little further. I talked briefly about it today, but that was it. Everybody's favorite thing here, we'll skip on over to, well, I'd just like to make a, before I do this, sorry. The multifamily guidelines, because these will be for rent, they will be applicable to this project. So that'll be something, you know, as it moves through the process to final master development plan and site plan, we'll be scouring those plans to make sure that they comply with all those items. Now on to the fun stuff, I guess. Something really, the most important stuff is the waiver request. There's a number of them here. Kind of a traditional one here that we see often is not 100% masonry for the buildings, 10% accent materials they want to use. Buildings look pretty good. It's, that's a small, small accent that we, staff can support. We see that fairly frequently in the city here for new buildings. Bizarrely, the multifamily regulations require that HVAC equipment be on the ground or not on the roof. They want to put it on the roof. So staff supports that request wholeheartedly as well. Also, multifamily requires fencing at the property lines. Staff supports that waiver request as well. Now, some other things, since it is multifamily, we have multifamily guidelines that we touched on here a little bit, a minute ago. Some of those include the inclusion of a playground at 100 square foot per bedroom. They are asking for relief on that. Omit exterior seating areas 20 feet per square, but that wasn't shown on the plan. Maybe that, maybe that's not 100% correct, but I'll let the applicant explain that further. But that is required in the multifamily regs and it's not shown on the plan as it sits in front of us. But we're, like I said, at PMDP, so it's early. Let's move on to number six here, building height 70 feet. This one is interesting because in CMU, you're allowed to have 70 feet height within a half a mile of an, an existing or proposed interstate interchange. This kind of lies right in between Mount Juliet Road and 40 and Central Pike and 40, the proposed Central Pike and 40. It's close. It's about six tenths of, tenth of a mile. So not a huge leap to go from, you know, to get that 70 feet. All right, here's another one. I won't, I don't, I'm not going to claim to know much about this, but to allow alcohol sales within the radius, 500 feet radius of, of the church. So that's the seven waivers. They're in the report there. So for your consideration. We have a conditional use section in here because the applicant would like to keep the church religious use in, in this pod in case, you know, but religious users want to occupy some of this, this building, the neighbor, Church of Pleasant Grove. Maybe I think, I don't know the full story on it, maybe they could explain, but that requires a conditional use permit. However, you are allowed to do that at Planning Commission and at Board of Commissioners. So I would like to, in the recommendation, it does not include conditional use permit. We need to add that. So the recommendation should read, staff recommends forwarding the preliminary master development plan and conditional use. forwarding the preliminary master development plan and conditional use permit because you have that ability to grant that not in lieu of the board is only appeals at this time. So if you look at the conditions, there's, you know, many, many, many of them, but that is the par for the course for the preliminary, you know, master development plans. We're getting everything right at the beginning here. And we want to get everything captured as soon as possible. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, just wanted to hit the highlights. I think all of our comments were there uh from our review, traffic study and the site itself, obviously for for us. Um, I think in general, with this being a mixed use site, really bodes well. Each individual site, if you had apartments, if you had office, if you had retail, if you had uh a restaurant, if you had all those separated, and you talked about the traffic generated from each one, um, those are going to all function separately. But to have all those on one site, there is what we call internal capture of trips. So people who live there are going to be going to the restaurant, uh, potentially be working there, potentially using the retail there. And so there's a good cap internal capture there. So the sum is some of the traffic is far less than the whole of what it would generate otherwise. So um, I like seeing these uh from a transportation aspect. I'm a big fan of mixed use developments. Uh, and so for that, um, really like seeing this. And as this, as we inch ever closer to the Central Pike interchange, um, that will be um, I I believe we're going to start to see more of this. Um, part of that, we, you know, we talk about connectivity uh and things like that. But just wanted to hit, I know there would be some concern over Pleasant Grove Road itself. Uh, hit the high points there. With the staff have been tasked through the Board of Commissioners in this current budget year to begin uh design for Pleasant Grove Road itself. What you see in paddocks will essentially be extended all the way to Central Pike, somewhere close to the intersection where it is today. And so uh basically from when the interchange goes in, there's no full access points within 1,200 feet of that interchange. And so the Pleasant Grove Road intersection where it exists today is just past that. So that's the general idea. Uh, may go follow generally along that alignment, could vary some from it, but right here in front of this project, and additionally the church next door, we've got to thread a needle through there. So um, that project is ongoing. So I know there would be some concerns about that. Um, I think that's a key project for us. I think it's going to be a high priority project for us. We've got to get that going at close to the same time that the interchange goes in so that we can facilitate the traffic to and from the new interchange. It's going to be a big traffic road for us. Um, I don't think this project is necessarily going to generate it. It's the interchange is what we need to be concerned with. Um, this obviously has its own trip generations. Uh, and so I know there'll be some concern over the intersection of Pleasant Grove Road and um Central Pike, which I have in public works comment uh number one B. Um, and so for that, we analyze the intersection. Obviously, there's a bad site distance issue I'm sure everybody's aware of. And so similar to this, Kelsey Glenn actually lowered the hill at John Wright Road. John Wright Road had almost the same situation. Um, I would argue that Pleasant Grove Road has far more traffic than John Wright did at the time. Um, little bit more now that Kelsey Glenn's connected, but um, that same situation was done by the developer on Central Pike to lower the hill there. They added a left turn lane on Central Pike, lower the hill, and we're all able to do that. Obviously, there's some utility relocation. So um, seeing this project, uh, you know, having the uh, I would say if you asked me importance of anything out of this project as far as transportation improvements, that's job number one. Uh, if we're not able to do anything else, I don't want to see that done. Uh, and so that is is we did have that in there. You might ask as well about timing. The interchange is under design right now. I could see that being constructed five, six years probably. Um, the Pleasant Grove Road, obviously, we're just embarking on that. And so I'm going to expect, assuming we pay for that with city money, probably similar timeframe and uh, but Central Pike itself at the intersection with Pleasant Grove Road, that will not happen until T-Dot comes through and actually does the work on Central Pike outside of the interchange. That hill won't get lowered by T-Dot probably 10 years, I would say, best case scenario. The hill to me is the biggest concern I have. I'm not as concerned as much about the traffic on Pleasant Grove Road. It's a two-lane road. Yes, it's windy. Uh, but it it's uh, we we're we're working toward that. So I'm not as concerned necessarily because we have a solution and we're working towards it. The one I am concerned about is that hill. I think the timeline on that, there's no committed funding right now. T-Dot is just in the planning stages on that improvement. It will happen. It's in the Improve Act, which you're familiar with, state law, when we got our gas taxes raised a few years ago. Um, there's benefits to us. We get projects out of it, and that's one of them. That's a direct benefit for us. But the timing could still be out there a long way. Um, so that that is the one that I did want to highlight. I know when we went through Groves Reserve, which is down the hill into the west of this project, that was the same concern there. We had them do a separate left and right turn lane there. Obviously, it was a much smaller project overall from number of units. But um, we did want them to do that. It improves some level of service there, helps a little bit, but it doesn't take out the site distance. We knew if we had a significant project coming along, the site distance concern there would be job number one. And and uh the significance of this project, uh, I believe can can be able to do that. It won't be without its challenges. Obviously, I did include there for offsite improvements. If they had to acquire any right of way, we would have some reversionary uh statement in there for Public Works Comment Number Two, that we could go through that process and we could go through and acquire the right of way up to and including condemnation if we had to, because the public improvement is better than not happening. Uh, and to me, it's critical as far as seeing this move forward. So uh, want to try to have those in there. Uh, that number two, I'm wanting to do that moving forward for a lot of these that we see as critical improvements. So um, happy to answer any other questions. I know focused purely on the transportation transportation aspect of it. Um, but uh, at least wanted to kind of hit the high points there. Thank you.
My question's actually live within that. So I kind of like what has been proposed and idea and everything that we got laid out. Where my struggle is, is that I got a lot of pretty pictures and not a lot of functional detail to tell me really honestly what is happening on this site. And as I just kind of sat here, um, listening to staff comments and marking some notes, I can circle about 20 areas of concern that I've got in egress, ingress, accessibility, crosswalk, stop, traffic movement. D cell, X cell, what are we doing about the median out there? I mean, I can continue to go on and on and on. How are we going to access the cell tower? How am I going to authorize a a mixed use building with parking across a arterial road that is going to be feeding a apartments and maybe the guy in the apartments or woman in the apartments doesn't really care about coffee shop and comes blowing through there to get to their apartment? And the only way to get to that mixed use building is going to walk right across the street. So I don't know how the plan, the only struggle I've got right now as I look at is I don't know how this thing functions because it's and I look at my plan, I'm approving a preliminary master development plan on a conceptual site plan.
Yeah.
My struggle.
Well, to to answer your question on turn lanes, uh, the median out on Pleasant Grove, we did address that comment when I requiring that left turn lane and basically taking that portion of the road and at least building that up to and including around their entrance. Two, two things there. One, we want to get the left turn coming in. Um, because we need to set it up for success in the future.
Yeah.
Second as well, obviously, we're going to be working on Pleasant Grove Road, same thing, set that up for success. So we don't have to come in and do roadwork in front of a recently built development, basically. Um, so those are the reasons for for that comment in there. I think from talking with the developer on this, obviously, this is just FMDP level. A lot of those details will be hammered out with FMDPs. That's where we'll get into uh calming the traffic through the site. I know from talking with them, I think one of the in my vision of when I see something like this, I want it to be walk walkable. I want it to be uh accessible for people if you're going, I mean, from the church even for that matter, considering it being generally part of the same site. Uh, and you're going to have people living in the apartments on the south side and walking up to the north side. Heck, they might even want to walk to Walmart. Um, and so the um, I want to, I I think with that, our vision for wanting to see this come to fruition is making sure that that's there. Uh, I have a comfort level at least knowing that the developers have the same idea in mind. They do not want, uh, when we talked about connectivity, you'll note, uh, we we addressed that uh in, let's see.
I'm I'm right there with you.
Number five.
What's that? I said, I'm right there. Everything you've said is just perfect. But I don't see it.
Hmm.
So shouldn't we be seeing that at this point? Are we not, we shouldn't be seeing more detail or internal sidewalk, internal movement, parking layouts, all of that, XL, D cells? And isn't this the point that we see the preliminary to recommend something to the BOC? Because I can't really make comments about this or that when I don't really know what's happening.
Yeah, I think from my understanding, I mean, this is generally with it being preliminary, uh, it is more conceptual in nature. Uh, the general idea of the building layout probably won't change that much. I'd say the parking layout probably won't change dramatically either. Um, but um, a lot of the details as far as the parking, the widths of the road internally, um, my ideas of wanting to do raised crosswalks or raised intersections or things like that, um, that's that's the level of detail where you're going to see what the road improvements physically are drawn out on a plan um that would be submitted here that we can take a look at. For more for what I would consider more of an engineering level review, that's to me going to come with FMDP site site plan, sorry. Um, so that's that's where I feel like there's um, I would say if there's general things in there as far as um, you know, if we want to add a conditions as far as traffic calming within the site, we want to see that connectivity, but we don't want to see a racetrack going through here. And so making generalized comments about that, uh, know that staff is very strong in that. Actually, I'm talking with uh Pastor Wharton on that as well. I know that's a big concern of his uh as well. So I I know it's a concern all around, but you know, I think it's uh some things like that if we want to capture a condition of applying traffic calming throughout the site, um, ensuring low volume speeds, walkability, accessibility, those kinds of things I think will be big. I think you're going to have a lot of that within here.
Is there an, I mean, is there an engineer plan that goes with this?
Uh, no, what we have right here, I think it's A4. Yeah, what's that? Yeah, that would be final match. Yeah. Yeah, that would come with the site plan at FMDP.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I I like what I see and agree with all of your comments and everything else. And I guess I was just expecting to see something better.
Yeah. I think conceptually speaking, if um, you know, if you wanted to see uh internal traffic circles or calming specific locations, I think uh it would be good to capture those now. Uh, maybe some of the other details as far as um, width of the road and things like that, we would definitely be capturing as I plan.
Yeah, I mean, so then to just bring the comments or I guess my comments back to to record would be, you know, we need to show how we're going to access the cell tower at the back. What is that going to be? What's that going to do to affect the parking back there for building G? What's going to happen to my consider or in my opinion, two very valuable pieces of property uh that have zero development on it per this conceptual plan. One is that 4A kind of odd triangle up there at Old Pleasant Grove Road corner, which would be a very valuable piece of property. Um, is it going to develop? Is there going to be any planned accessibility to it to future development? Um, how do we plan to get pedestrian traffic from the parking lot that is west of building A? How many drive lanes, turn lanes do we have coming in off of Old Pleasant Grove Road and Pleasant Grove Road? And how will that traffic move? Um, where are the internal sidewalks and movement within it? Um, I would personally like to see parking, I guess, closer to some of these buildings or the opportunity for. I imagine there's got to be some kind of ADA violation in itself. Um, not having that parking there would be kind of a a guess of mine. Um, and I guess just these are things to bring back to the Board of Commissioners' attention to make sure that that they're looking at this as they move forward. And then the back reverse L property that uh on item C dash 10 has Village at Pleasant Grove, put area 21.00 acres up in there, which is also pretty uh good piece of property over there. I know it's got some probably has some topo in that area uh issues, but how's that property going to be used? What's going to be used there? You know, if we're doing this kind of a mixed use, is it going to be some type of a community garden that would support both the church and the apartments as well? Uh, we've made the recommendation for the playground to come back in. Where's going to be the location of the playground on this? Um, I guess a more explanation on the internal movement because all of our parking seems to be on the perimeter. And I like the walkability internally on this. Um, I guess I'd just like to see a little bit more.
Yeah. Uh, the uh, I do know the applicant is here. I know a lot of these questions probably need to be answered or addressed by them.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, Andy.
To deal with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Let's go ahead and ask for the applicant real quick. Name and address for the record.
Three minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Uh-oh.
What?
Uh-oh.
What?
I already know he's a pastor.
Listen.
Yeah, I already know he's a pastor.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. I'm Andrew Wharton, uh, pastor of the church at Pleasant Grove. Uh, nice to meet some of you. We've been here multiple times before with uh with all of this. And uh, so let me just give you a little bit of background. Those of you that don't know, we have have worked for years to try to develop one of, I think, the nicest sites in our city uh with the corridor paddock ultimately headed as Andy was sharing. But as a church, we have always dreamt of drawing in community to this space, a place that's walkable, a place that we've talked about track, walking spaces around the outside. Uh, we've conveyed all that to them, a place where people want to come and hang out, a place where people want to come and just be able to relax and enjoy a place, maybe not so much on a major thoroughfare in our community. And so these guys uh at Imagine One have helped us pull that together. Um, it feeds the the need of our church to bring people to us so we can kind of capture them. It's not like we're tricking them to come to church because they wouldn't come anyway because I'm too long-winded, apparently. But um, it's just, that's our goal, is to serve the community. We've always been that way. And we think we think we found a way to do that in a unique way by bringing a genuine commercial mixed use facility where we can eat and linger and gather and gather at tables where great stuff happens. So that being said, we uh, we we again, we partner with Imagine. We like what they have done and they've been really good to us so far and seen our vision and trying to write it out. And I know that Matt can speak to a lot of stuff you were talking about, Luke, which are absolutely all 100% things they've already heard from me and have promised that they would occur. And so um, that's just the background. And um, if if you would ever like to talk about lots 4A and 4B, I would love to have that conversation at some other time, but uh, um, I don't.
It won't take three minutes.
It won't take three minutes at all. So I will uh, I'm sure I'm under three minutes, so I'll yield the rest of my time to the Senator from. So I will, I'm sure I'm under three minutes, so I'll yield the rest of my time to the Senator from Imagine One.
Please, thank you.
Thank you all. My name is Matt Gardner, 4603 Sky Mont Drive, Nashville. Wanted to thank Pastor Andrew for introducing us. He was a great supporter of ours when we were here almost four years ago with our Vintage Station North project that's just down the road. And we've stayed in contact and about a year ago, he reached out and wanted to talk more about his property there at the church and how we could really work together to realize his vision. And over the course of several months and many, 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 many conversations, we started to gel a plan. And, and really this is the fruition of that, of that plan. We envision, oh, and part of that visioning is we sat down with a lot of the Board of Commission members and a lot of time with staff and really tried to share at the very high level what we were working on and thinking about. We incorporated all of their comments, their concerns, their questions, the walkability. And that has generated the plan before you. And it is my understanding is this is the level of specificity that we're supposed to have at this level. And then, because things can move around at the board and then you start getting the very, very tight details. I think I'll answer all of your questions and concerns during my presentation. If not, throw something at me and I'll address it. We really look at Village at Pleasant Grove as being, which by the way, was named by one of your Board of Commissioner members. He, during his input, threw that name out and we liked it, so it stuck. We see this as a step up from our Vintage Station North project. That project, we've had tremendous success with it as a luxury apartment complex with a small amount of retail and office. We see this project as really having the retail office and commercial piece be at the forefront. It is a substantially larger amount of the retail. To that one question about details, we're looking at about 17,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space and about 95,000 square feet of office space on those two main buildings, a restaurant out parcel and then the, the small pop-up. And we're working with several high-end retail companies, restaurants and office space to really tailor that space to exactly what they want, especially that restaurant out parcel. We've been in some great conversations with a restaurant that I think everybody's going to be very excited about coming to Mount Juliet, being a little bit of a step up from a lot of the, the, what's here now. Hopefully be able to announce something soon if we get through this process. The heart of this project is really that community gathering space in the middle. And really to Chairman Winchester's point, we want this to be a walkable project. We want all of the roads, all of the internal movement of this project to be pedestrian oriented. We don't want people driving from the apartments to the office. We want people walking. And so, and a lot of our comments and, and we've spent a lot of time with Mr. Barlow talking about connection to the property at the rear. And we pushed back very, very hard on that because we did not want that main drive to be a, a big road. We wanted that to be a pedestrian oriented road. Obviously, we have vehicles on it, but you know, we've done a lot of work and know a lot of research about how you can make a street feel safe for pedestrians, that people feel comfortable walking down. You get green space, then there's the sidewalks and people don't feel like there's a car blowing by me at 35 miles an hour. You do that by road width, you do that by green space, you do that by wide sidewalks. That is integral to our vision for this project. That's not something that we feel obligated to do because somebody asked for it. That is the central focus of our vision for this project, is that community gathering space and the ability for all of the visitors, office tenants, retail tenants, restaurant patrons, residents to be able to utilize that. And if they don't feel comfortable walking through the project, then we haven't achieved that vision. And, and really that central courtyard feature is really the heart of the project. Got a water feature there. There's an existing pond on the property that we are going to kind of upgrade, put some fountains in the middle of it. We've got a mixed-use, excuse me, a multi-use space kind of next to it from the back of the two office buildings that go right up to there. Lots of patio space. We're envisioning live music, movies in the park on the weekends. You know, utilizing that pop-up space to, you know, sell hot chocolate in the winter and ice cream in the summer and, and more idea like that, thinking about a, a true kind of community gathering space. We've had a surprising amount of success at our Vintage Station North project in the area right outside Red Bicycle. Relatively small, we designed that more as an amenity space to our own residents. And we've been really excited to see how many people from outside the project are coming in and spending a lot of time there. So we're really building upon that success and what we've seen there to expand that at a much greater level. Again, we're looking at about 17,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, 94,500 square feet of office, 275 residential units. That multifamily space will be highly amenitized in a very similar fashion to what we've done at Vintage Station North. Resort-style, large swimming pool in the middle of the units. Large fitness room with separate cardio facility, a big club room, a large dog park. And in one of the staff comments about the, about the playground, we've actually had more conversations with planning staff. And I think the, we saw that as a traditional playground, swing sets, slides, things geared more towards family. Our demographic is a little bit different. Most of who we target with our residential units and our success at Station North is kind of who our resident mix is, is a little bit different than a standard apartment complex in Mount Juliet. We tend more to young professionals. We have empty nesters. We have folks who travel a lot for work and don't want to deal with yard maintenance. And they're not looking for a playground and a bunch of kids in the pool on Saturday morning. They want a big dog park. Our, the number of dogs in our facility is enormous. It's fantastic. So big dog run, outdoor walking and jogging trails. You know, those are the amenities that I think are, us and staff are on the same page that we will absolutely provide. We did, but a true playground is, is just a different target from who we're trying to hit with this project. And the same thing with the benches. We, we have every intention of having, you know, plenty of space around the site and a lot of it around that outdoor amenity space. We want people taking lunch outdoors, stopping by, you know, even if they're not actually shopping on site, just it's a beautiful place to be on a pretty afternoon. And so that's, those are absolutely fine. The project consists of largely of four-story buildings. The pop-up and the restaurant out parcel are is the exception of that. That is what's driving that 70-foot height variance request. And as you can see from our renderings, we're proposing a facade that utilizes white bricks with some access, metal panels, things like that around door openings, some storefront, you know, things that get us away from that 100% brick requirement, but do so in a way that we feel like upgrades the facade. You know, metal panels are a lot more expensive than brick, but we feel like the elevations you see as I think the P M D P requirement is indicative elevations of the building. So we tried to give a bunch there so you get a real good sense of what this project's going to look like. Again, I keep going back to our exemplar here in Mount Juliet of Station North. Our, we received a similar variance on that project and it was much, we have much less than 90% brick there. So it'll be more brick than that project is I guess what I'm saying. As planning staff said, we are looking to put our HVAC units on the roof, adequately shielded by full parapet wall, so somebody shouldn't be able to see them from the road or from the, from the street. The goal there is we don't want people to be able to see them. If they're on the ground, as you can see from the site plan, that's a lot of space that would go towards air conditioning condensers that we just don't feel is consistent with the quality of the project. We'd love to stick them on the roof, hide them so they, they go away from the residents walking around. And we talked about the, the fencing. A lot of that was in conversations with staff about increasing walking connectivity to our neighbors and to folks coming on and off the site. If the whole project's fenced, that's a lot more challenging. So just keeping that space open is, is what we were going for. We, you know, as we really have for the past four years, we've, we've tried our best to be fantastic neighbors at Vintage Station North and, and we are continuing to be. That's a project that we are, you know, we are not merchant developers. We don't build and sell. We build and hold. We're in the process now of putting our permanent financing in place. Knock on wood, hoping to have that closed here in about two months. And we, we believe in Mount Juliet and we believe in Mount Juliet long-term. And we hope to build projects that aren't just good for us in the city now, but are going forward. And we're kind of keeping that financial investment in the city. And so as we look at things like this, we want them to be things that are, are an asset to the city, not just now. Thank you for your consideration and I hope that you vote in favor of this project. Were there any questions that I didn't answer, Chairman? Thank you. Thank you.
So we'll back you up on that?
Well, thank you. Thank you. Other questions?
Questions, comments from the commission?
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Cunningham.
Comments on this? And first off, I'll begin by saying I'm, I'm a supporter of this project, much like I think a lot of us probably would be too. The track history of Vintage Station North. If it wasn't for Vintage Station North, I'd still be a supporter of this. But watching what you all did before at Vintage Station North was a welcome addition to our community. The, the folks that are renting there, you go in there, you just see smiling faces everywhere. You go to Red Bicycle, grab a coffee. I mean, it's just, it is a vibrant atmosphere that you've created there. And I have to believe, like any real estate development project that I've done and have been a part of in the past, anytime you do it again, you improve upon it. And I have to believe that there probably was, I can't find it. There's probably a mistake you made of Vintage Station North somewhere along the way and you're going to correct that when you come in here to this development. So it'll be the new and improved. The, the retail, the office space here, the mixed-use, you don't see a lot of mixed-use developments around the suburbs. You see those more in the inner core. And with that, to go back to the playground comment, when I first saw this on here, I thought there's a reason why they wanted to kind of, you know, ex-nate a playground and I didn't know what it was exactly. So I reached out to determine what that was. And basically, the demographic renting here in the, the mixed-use area or mixed-use complexes here, it's not going to be the family of five, okay, that needs the playground out there. This is going to be young professionals renting here. This is going to be, as you said, empty nesters, people who are here, you know, for a period of time to not necessarily use that, but it will be replaced with an amenity equal or greater than that playground was going to be. I'm seeing a paradigm shift in the Class A apartments right now in the line of work that I'm in where that family of five that is going to rent is going to go to a subdivision to rent, for example, the Kane Break. It was a Kane Break subdivision we talked about earlier. They're going to go there because in the Class A apartments, there is a void of square footage and yard. And you're giving that to them in the subdivisions so they can rent now. So this is a different demographic that doesn't need a playground per se. So anyhow, this project, to go back to, you, you did what you said you were going to do at Vintage Station and I feel like you'll do the same thing here. You have a track history and we love that. And I like the fact too, you mentioned briefly, and I think this is a huge thing that we should all consider. This is a buy and hold firm. What that means is they're not coming here as a capital fund, as an investment fund, as a REIT to come in and with their business model being, let's come in, let's fill it up and let's sell it. Because there are a lot that do that. And when they do that, and that's their, that's their goal from day one, you might sacrifice the quality of the project, the long-term durability, the building materials that are being used. So I have to believe that when you have a choice to use a grade A building material or a grade B that none of us would see along the way, you'd probably use the grade A because you're buying, you're building a hole, not building a cell. So those are my comments on the project. I obviously support it.
Yeah, I'm with you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go for citizen comments regards this item on the agenda. Any citizens wishing to make comment? Welcome, encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Bill Truett, 1403 Brighton Circle. This is not in my district, however, this group of team members that own Vintage Station, I'll tell you, they actually stepped up when my district did need them. This is what's nice about having businesses that invest back into the city. So I just want to share my support and appreciate what they did out there. They're actually, I was just speaking with one of them tonight about the red, white and blue. I thought it was great. It just mirrors exactly what our city represents, which is first class. And, you know, just, you know, just want to just throw my two cents in what it's worth and just say that, hey, it's a, it's a great project, looking forward to it and hoping that the board also sees it that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments? Seeing none at this time, I'm looking for a recommendation in regards to this item on our agenda.
Motion to approve?
Motion for a positive recommendation? I'll second you. It's a motion for a positive recommendation in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions. Seeing none. That is a positive recommendation. Now know that and for clarification too, because you probably asked for this, that the motion did include the conditional use.
It did, and the variances.
And yes.
Yes.
Is that correct? Very well. All right. Next item up on our agenda is also a recommendation item. Any objection to, and would staff support hearing one, two, eight, one, two and three together? Okay. Any objection for us hearing items eight, one, eight, two and eight, three together? All right. With that being said, we will hear items eight, one, eight, two and eight, three together. All three are recommendation items back to the Board of Commissioners. Item eight, one is review the annexation request for the South Green Hill Road subdivision located at South Green Hill Road and Virginia Hill Drive. Item eight point two is a recommendation item back to the Board of Commissioners. Review the plan of services for the South Green Hill Road subdivision located at South Green Hill Road and Virginia Hill Drive. Item eight point three is review the rezone request for the South Green Hill Road subdivision located at South Green Hill Road and Virginia Hill Drive. Once again, just saying that at this point in time, all we are hearing and discussing is annexation, plan of services and rezone. Ms. Hampton?
Thank you. The applicant has applied for an annexation, plan of services and rezone from County R1 to City RS 15 for a variable lot subdivision proposal and staff recommends approval.
Very well. Questions or comments from the commission? Seeing no questions or comments from the commission, this time we'll call for citizen comments. Any citizens wishing to make comment? Welcome, encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This is the annexation, plan of services and rezone only.
This may be out of sequence or time or whatever. So I think the guy that was here earlier tonight about 6:30 or 6:45, he must be smarter than I am because
I know you, but name and address for the record.
I'm sorry about that. Ron Britt, 1000 Virginia Hill Drive. I'm the first house in Mount Vernon, Virginia Hill Drive in Mount Vernon Woods. So I have just a little interest in this. I realize houses are coming. No problem there. You know, it's, it's okay with me. The only thing I would ask, if you folks, I know you'll do the right thing there, whatever that is as far as approvals, zonings, annexations or whatever, whatever your recommendations are. But the only thing I would ask is that South Green Hill Road is many times busier than it was, whether it's the north-south corridor, whatever the reason for it is, avoiding Mount Juliet Road. I don't know what they're doing, but it's really, really busy. You hear this all the time. I, I got that. But for instance, now coming from Lebanon Road heading south, when I turn into, turn left into my, into Virginia Hill Drive, I've got about a second or two for the folks topping that hill and that curve for me to shoot right into Virginia Hill Drive. It's, it's a bit of a challenge now. So the thing is with the homes that are going to be built across the street and they, I assume they probably will be. But at any rate, talking about how they're going to get out of there onto South Green Hill Road. And I think I saw that it will be straight across from Virginia Hill Drive. I just don't know how that's going to happen, but I'm sure you'll, somebody will figure it out. It's not that. I would just ask you to, as, as you've mentioned, somebody mentioned before, the road needs to be straightened if possible. And it's, I don't know if you can get any of the hill knocked down or not, but certainly we need turn lanes. So anyhow, having said that, I just want to express my concern, not against it, not against development. That's coming whether we like it or not. So just make it the safest it can be and don't make it worse than it already is now, which is questionable. I've, in the past 26 years, got over there, sometimes in rainy streets, wet streets, icy streets and helped get cars out of Mr. Carson's horse lot there where they plowed the horse lot because they need to turn on the hill. They're coming too fast. So anyhow, whatever you can do, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Back again. New topic.
Name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. 1403 Brighton Circle.
Just remember this annexation rezone only at this time.
Yes, yes. Just wanted to, just, just, just mirror what the last two gentlemen had mentioned. I, I do understand that it's going to be, I voted on, on that, but just wanted to make sure it was a statement. There have been a lot of concerns that I've received in the last probably two weeks pertaining to this project. And I just want to make sure that we at least look for the future, what's going to be happening on that road with other projects and the, and the traffic. So I understand it's only for zoning, however, just want the board to consider what the future is going to look like on that road as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments this time? Seeing no additional citizen comments this time, I'd like to ask for a recommendation in regards to items eight point one, eight point two and eight point three to the Board of Commissioners. Positive recommendation? I have a motion for a positive recommendation. Second by Commissioner Cersei. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions is a positive recommendation. Next item on our agenda is item eight point four, which is review the master plan for the South Green Hill Road subdivision located at South Green Hill Road and Virginia Hill Drive. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. The proposal is for an 18-lot subdivision on two different cul-de-sacs, just as you stated, across from Virginia Hill Drive. Lot sizes range from 11,265 square feet to 49,607. They're coming in under the variable lots subdivision regulations and they have not asked for any waivers or variances to those regulations and staff recommends approval with our conditions as listed in our staff report.
I got a question for you real quick. And this would be unique for us, but we potentially, of course, we've not made any decisions on this one here before us tonight. But two developments that have significant impact on county roads, but we can't necessarily do much about helping the improvement. Would it be out of line for the Planning Commission to forward recommendations? Our Planning Commission either to the County Mayor and the County Commissioners? Now we have Commissioner Weathers here, being the County Commissioner on the, here, but also certain that all of them hear some of our concerns and whatnot out here with what's happening on our end of the county. And would that be something maybe unprecedented or maybe start a new precedent to say, hey, this is what is happening, this is what is going? We would appreciate your consideration for improvements and these are our concerns on these county roads. And sometimes we feel like our concerns fall upon deaf ears?
I think Mr. Barlow has had that conversation with the County Road Commission. I'll, I'll let him take the podium and answer that question for you.
That'd be great. And whether or not we were to, I guess, Mr. Barlow, what I'm kind of thinking out loud is that after each meeting, if we have something that is approved, a recommendation that comes out of our meeting, a letter from this Planning Commission, not necessarily even staff, but from your Planning Commission, either to the Wilson County Planning Commission or to the Wilson County Commission or to the County Mayor to say, hey, here's what's going on and get it in their packet, whether or not anything's done with it. But to, but how many county commissioners do we have? 25 is 25 sheets of paper, seems like it'd be a great use for it.
So we do, I know on the accesses, you know, anytime we get down to construction accesses, any improvements on a roadway or anything like that, we always will send those to the County Road Commission. We always do correspond with them on those. Haven't had any in a little bit, I don't think, but, but we will, like Bradshaw Farm's going to be coming in, that'll be, that'll be one that is going to be coming through. We did the same on Kelsey Glenn's connection to John Wright Road. That was one that's, we've recently gone through construction with them on, but we did coordinate with them on the improvements there. Generally speaking, what we do is if we recognize it is a county road, that we, if we see an improvement that needs to be made, if there's turn lanes or anything like that, we will make a recommendation for those items and ultimately have to leave it up to the County Road Commission.
So we're not putting anything in the County Commissioner's hands?
No.
Or the Mayor's hands?
Road Commission. I believe they're the governing authority and, yeah. Yes.
Just a thought. I just, I mean, something unique and just something to say, hey, what was the name of the Bender's Ferry development?
Wells Farm?
Wells Farm. Hey, that this body approved the Wells Farm development, the, our body's concerns were X, Y and Z and send that letter directly to each county commissioner and county mayor's wife? Be unique. I don't know if anybody's done that before, but just kind of a thought. Yeah. So with that.
Yeah.
I got us all, all the way off tangent. Please, Mr. Barlow, public works comments.
Okay, so I wanted to add, it didn't get included in your packets, but we did have two comments that we had for our side of the fence. The one thing the developer has agreed and shown in the master plan, agreed to provide a right-of-way reservation. Keep in mind, this is a county road right here at this location, a little bit further south of here, it is a city road. I can see us annexing this maybe in the not-too-distant future, but for now, it is still a county road. They've agreed to provide a right-of-way reservation, word is important, to South Green Hill to establish the future right-of-way line at 37 and a half feet from the existing center line of the road. I'll mention something else here in a minute. The right-of-way reservation shall be dedicated to the city at the time South Green Hill Road is annexed into the city. Additionally, they've shown providing a six-foot wide sidewalk. Obviously, we understand the County Road Commission doesn't want sidewalks within their right-of-way, so therefore provide that within the reservation. And it would be maintained by the HOA and until that becomes dedicated to the city. So basically, we annex the road, we get the reservation, we get the sidewalk with it. That's a way and a means by which sidewalk goes in there and, and we don't run into the, the issue with sidewalk on a county road. But when it becomes a city road, voila, it's ours. And the other thing I'd like to mention on the right-of-way reservation, there's some concerns, I actually spoke with Chuck Turner last week as well about this, about the, the blind hill there and, and the situation. This is a very limited development as far as being able to do large improvements. I wouldn't say it fits within the category of lowering the hill. I think the cost of that would be far greater than what a smaller development of this size could sustain. The keys there to me, you've got a situation there. You have a horizontal site distance issue and you have a vertical site distance issue. They can address with their development, they can address the horizontal issue. And so that would, that would benefit folks and coming out of Virginia Hill as well today. The, so the vertical issue would have to come at some point in time, whether that becomes part of a city project. If we take the roadway right-of-way over, I could see us doing that, maybe and potentially improving this alignment. I could see that being a main consideration at that time. I think my take on it would be, let's take the easy low-hanging fruit. Let's take the horizontal, let's try to fix that, at least from a site distance pers- perspective. We've got a master plan here, that's something that we need to look at the construction plans. But as long as we address that and we have that, we've got it noted for the future. You will see this again, by the way. This is just the master plan and Jennifer could probably talk a little bit more about the procedures on that. But you will, you will see this again before it goes to construction. So we do have one more shot at that to really take down the, and take the nitty-gritty approach to looking at what that site distance looks like. That's all for me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Kind of one question or request. I know we can't really do anything to impose that out there on South Green Hill. For those that don't know, I also live on Virginia Hill Drive. And when I sit on my deck in the mornings and as I go home this evening, this is the land that I will look at off the deck on the back of my house. So my view will probably, even though Mr. Britt is closer than I am, my view probably changes tenfold drastically more than what his does because it is what I look at and enjoy to look at and see the trees. And I'm proud of staff for putting that comment in there to try to do some tree preservation in this development along that. And that would be definitely welcome. But it is what I look at. As I watched the sunset last night and it falls right over that hill right there and this comes right up there to the top of that hill as it elevates up right there. It's a very beautiful piece of land and understanding it is going to be developed. So with that right there, another, we can't do anything off-site right there. But one thing in the meantime that would definitely help and reiterate Mr. Britt's comments there, and he's definitely got tenure on me as I've only been there almost nine years. Maybe a flashing signal at the top south, what would that be, south portion of the development? Just a flashing signal to let you know dangerous intersection ahead, something to flag your traffic to stop. As my kids began to drive, I told them, as you're heading northbound on South Green Hill because of this road and it comes down like that, that they're to turn their blinker on at the top of the hill, not when they get down there to Virginia Hill. And as I was teaching them to drive and enter and come in and out of our neighborhood and we were living there as both my children, both turned 16. If they didn't turn their blinker on, they weren't driving with me. So, but just one more effort. And so to me, a flashing light, if there's no other improvement that can be done or this body can put upon that, flashing light would be onsite to theirs facing southbound. Is that something that we could have in this or request within this? Because it is onsite. Yeah, it'd be at the very top. Yeah. Just something right there to note that there's a flashing yellow light, there's no houses around it, so you're not affecting a neighbor by having a flashing yellow light sitting right up there, but it's something to say, hey, watch out, this is coming. Because we will have some conflicting traffic in there because there's a good density to Virginia Hill Drive and Virginia Hill Drive actually ties over to Mount Vernon Estates as long as, as well as feeding Mount Vernon Woods. Something small that could possibly make a big difference. So just my one comment. With that, questions or comments from the commission? Wonderful. Let's go ahead and open it up, citizen comments. Any citizens wishing to make comment and welcome, encouraged to do so. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. At this point in time, we are hearing the master site development plan. So as I said last time, we were talking about the plan of services rezoned variable lot and now it is a master site development plan. So any questions, comments or whatnot from citizens, welcome and encourage to do so. Seeing no citizen comments at this time. We will, I'd like to ask for a motion regards to this item on the agenda. I'll make a motion for, Phil, that waiting on me, huh? Yeah. Phil, I'll make a motion for approval, subject to staff comments, also subject to the addition of a flashing light at the, I'm going to call it the southern corner of the neighborhood at the rear portion of lot two. Maybe something solar or whatnot, it doesn't matter, but as long as it is a qualified flashing yellow light that indicates dangerous intersection ahead. That is my motion. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions. So approve. Next item on our agenda is an adjournment. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. I got a motion? I will second that one as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Against abstentions, we are adjourned.